Okay, all right. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, March fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. And with me today, I have Don Schwanker, Ned Flagel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. Alisa Smith is our county auditor.
Good morning.
Bjorn is here with IP. And Luann, our assistant, is in the background. And we invite everyone on the Zoom to, could you please introduce yourself? We know who's, not that we need to know, but is it Ann? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, could you please introduce yourself for the, for the records?
I just want to hear the information about the budgets.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, we will continue with our meeting, and so again, welcome here this morning. And first on our agenda is Jayden Chekel, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer.
Good morning, Jayden. First up, a couple entrance permits. First one is for Steve Capacious on two hundred and thirtieth Avenue, north of La Monica. Residential driveway meets site distance, both coming from the north and south. Doesn't require a colvert due to the high point in the road or ditch. So pretty straightforward on this one, so we are recommending approval for Steve Capacious. Township, Prairie Springs Township, Section seven.
I like that motion.
Second. A motion and second to approve the entrance permit for Steve Capacious as presented, although the paper say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next one is for Daniel Mickel on three hundred and forty-first Avenue, just south Highway sixty-two. Bought some farm ground and wants to put in just a field entrance on there. Site distance is met from the south, from the north, it's limited at four hundred feet, but we would just recommend a hidden driveway sign installed. Needs a colvert, checked all that out, so this one is also pretty straightforward, so we recommend approval on this one in Jackson Township, Section four.
And they cover the hidden driveway sign?
Yep, we will install it, and once we get it put up, we send them an invoice for the hidden driveway sign.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve Daniel Mickel driveway permit, field entrance permit as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
The last is, we received quotes for pavement markings, our annual pavement markings that we do in the county. We do center lines on our paved roads, we paint center lines every year and do edge lines on about a third of the roads. So about every three years each paved road will get its edge line painted. Received quotes from Camline, highway markings, local traffic services, non- airplane signing. Lowest one was Camline for a total of one hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents, so.
So you said all center lines on our county paved roads and a third of the outside line?
Yep.
And how does this compare to previous? Is there an increased percentage, or do you know?
It's about the same as last year.
Is it?
Yeah, I mean, because this year, some roads were actually excluded because, well, for example, we have our overlay, it's going to happen on Y sixty-one. So that road was excluded from this, since that'd be done with the project, we have the fog seal happening on Z fifteen.
Because the markings are already included in the overlay bid, right?
Correct, yep, so. So yeah, our estimate, we had around one hundred and thirty-six thousand estimated, so we fell right in line with our bids quotes.
Can you tell me, use better materials without doing it every year?
It'll cost more.
We had the stocks of the city, because they were like, well, we're going to use temporary stock, because I said there's permanent use, a permanent thing you can use, because it seems like we repaint neighborhood quite a bit.
So there is another paying for durable pavement markings, and those are quite more expensive, and you still likely have to come back and touch those up.
Well, I'd like to hear the history of it, or how long they do last, if it's three times as long, if it's, if it's only, again, it's half a month, and it makes a difference. I guess it's got to be feasible, financially feasible to do that.
And this falls right within our budget too, so for that item. So we recommend awarding to Camline Highway Markings.
How much was that amount again?
One hundred and twenty-six, nine fifty, twenty.
You're adopted.
I like the motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve Camline is the low bidder for markings, pavement markings on hard surface roads. In the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Just on a caveat, maybe going forward, if we could maybe do a test spot on a travel, you know? Try that under paint, to see how, if we notice a difference, you know? If it lasts a couple of years.
A good test one may be the Z forty south of Miles that Clinton County paved last year. Into our county, we got reimbursed for that H SIP, but that one, I believe, had durable pavement markings. The only thing I have to check is, I think they were grooved, since they make a groove in the pavement where the pavement markings actually sit, you know, recessed in the pavement.
Is that more like that tape adhesive?
It's still paint, but it's.
It looks more like.
I don't know if it's more reflective or there's more beads in it, but it's still paint.
Yeah.
But that would be, I should, I believe that one had durable markings, the only thing, I just, since it's recessed, if it is recessed in the pavement, that may obviously play a larger role in it lasting longer as well.
Right.
But if they're not, that'd be a good test one, otherwise, yeah, we can look at doing.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's easy enough to switch over paint, I don't know that, I would doubt that would work, but I don't know, would they do ten miles as a test?
As part of this, or like?
Well, yeah, so we, somewhere along the line, we get them.
I just think it would be interesting to see, you know, and if it has to be recessed, okay, is that, is that the reason it's a higher bid price, is because they would recess it as part of the bid, or?
So the groove markings are included usually in the H SIP, like for Highway Safety Improvement Program. That's usually an item that they, there's a qualifying item for that, to help the stuff last longer, so that's why that's usually done with that. You know, if we were to do durable for just our annual stuff, we went groove in the pavement, we would just apply it right on the surface, but I can talk to Tom, maybe he's done durable too.
Well, I'm sure there's plenty of tests on, I assume that we're getting fairly one of the best products that's available. It's just like, it seems like, man, you gotta do that every year. Sometimes you, you paint, when we paint, you paint with a pool-based type paint that lasts longer or something, but, you know, as they say, a patient here, there's a patient lost, so, you know, so it's like, they might do it every year.
Yeah, I can look into it.
Yep, appreciate it. That's all I have. Okay, well, I appreciate it, Jayden. You got some stuff there for one of us?
I'm sure, at least, some of it there.
I'll get it back to you. You bet. All right, is there any visitors or citizens either present or on the Zoom? That would like to approach the board this morning? Hearing none. Next to our agenda is Julie Thorne, our drug-free communities project coordinator, otherwise known as ASAC. Good morning.
Good morning. This is just some information, I just wanted.
Is Crocker joining or no?
Um, this is, I actually wanted to talk about my grant first, then I'm going to stay for the next one, that's the, that's okay. Um, so we had to do our year seven continuation paperwork, so you get the grant, you're competitive the first year, the next four, it's continuation paperwork. You have to do it, but you don't compete. So we turned ours in, I did send Luann an email, I mean, it's lots and lots and lots of pages. But I wanted you all to have that. There was nothing to sign this year, they made it all, you could just click online boxes instead of having to have physical signatures. So we submitted it, and it was accepted, so I wanted to let you know that. This summer, we are planning to go back to the mid-year leadership conference, kind of a bonus for us, it's in Chicago, I don't have to buy plane tickets, which was a huge, I mean, seriously, between luggage fees and get all that, that's a, that's a money saver. Bellevue Schools is actually providing Suburbans for us with gas, so that's a nice feature. We have expanded, we offered it to, well, first, we asked kids who wanted to go, and these are the, and then we look at meeting attendance, behavior at school, and have they participated in the activities we do. This is the group that would be eligible based and, and interested in going. And one of them already backed out, because it's, she'll be at her dad's in the summer, and he said no, which is certainly his prerogative. Yeah, and this is a larger number than usual, because we don't have to buy those plane tickets, it frees up about four thousand dollars, so we were able to take more kids. The kids do have some skin in the game, they are fundraising, they cover all the meals, all those weird incidentals you get stuck with, and then we try to do some, you know, like, they want to go to the Field Museum. So we'll go early on Sunday morning to Chicago, spend the day at the Field on their dime that they fundraised, because the conference starts at eight AM on Monday morning, so we'd be staying in the hotel anyway, so we're just going to do that as part of it, and they will fund that with their money. So just wanted you to be aware, that's the plan, we do have a budget for it, we actually get a lot of extra money, some things we had scheduled to do, people either did for us for free, or we didn't have to pay for, which is a beautiful thing. So we have plenty of money set aside, and the kids are doing their part.
So, um, when it says mid-year leadership incentive, so tell me, explain a little bit what initiative, I'm sorry. Explain a little bit what that all entails.
Okay, so it's a four-day conference from eight till four-thirty, the kids will go to sessions during the day, on different ones, some they get to pick, some, all of them go to, they teach them leadership skills, self-awareness, they do some mental health awareness and training, how to bring that back to their schools, they teach them some public health practices, how to do good prevention. Our kids did a media campaign in the Bellevue Schools, and it was based on what they learned last summer, how to make it effective, so that it actually reaches the kids and makes some impact on their decisions. So they are in sessions or classes from until four-thirty, Monday through Thursday, and then we do stuff in the evening with them, because for a lot of kids, it's the furthest they've ever been from home, and it's a great opportunity to expose them to some culture and stuff.
So this twelve thousand dollars is coming right out of the grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and?
Which I don't think we'll spend at all, but that is what we have budgeted.
Okay, and you said, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that they go back to the schools and they pass this information along, or do they teach, or do they instruct in some way?
So each school, these schools have groups, these youth leadership groups, and these kids become the leaders of those groups, and then they teach it to the groups, and then the groups go do activities in the school to encourage the kids to make healthy choices about alcohol, tobacco. They really chose to work on vaping and tobacco, because those are the biggest problems in our schools.
And somehow, I guess, I'd like to see some kind of report from them students and/or from the, from the school.
After the conference or during the school?
No, during the school year.
Um, okay.
Of what they did, you know, I mean, and maybe even in their own words or whatever, how they, how they pass this information that they obtained, how they pass this along to the school system or to other students or, you know, whatever it may be.
So I believe Luann handed you a one-sheet paper, it's my Board of Health report, so on the back side of that, I always talk about what the kids have done. So every Board of Health meeting, I go to the Board of Health, tell them what we're doing, give them a written report, we now have that copied, and on the back, it talks about the kids have done. In February, the big event was, one of the Bellevue kids spoke at a press conference in the rotunda of the Capitol, there's about five hundred people there, and Haley got up and talked about Bellevue, what Bellevue is happening. We met with our representative and our senator, we advocated for some concerns about vaping regulations, they did talk about that billboard on Macocata, north of the highway to marijuana one. Why is it legal to advertise illegal products in Iowa and with Senator Canoyer? And so she's actually talking with other legislators to make that illegal, if it's illegal here, you can't advertise it on, to our kids on a billboard, so.
I'd like them to focus on why is it, if it's illegal to buy THC marijuana in the state, why is it legal to sell synthetic THC?
Well, it's not, enforcement is a problem, and their House Bill six eighteen, I believe that's the right number, it changes every time they do something to it, is to increase enforcement of those problems, because there's a lot of illegal products. Those THC-infused drinks are illegal by Iowa law, there's no enforcement teeth or mechanism or body to do anything about them. So that is one of the bills that is being, it made the funnel, to my knowledge, it's still being considered inactive. Yeah, there's a lot of illegal stuff going on, and it's not being enforced, because it, who's, nobody knows whose enforcement it is, so they're trying to fix that.
Last week in the review paper, there was a program that was held up in, I don't know if it was out at, down at the riverfront or where it was, but they, they had a lot of items and stuff on display that show how they, what these vague cartridges and things are hidden. In a shoe and a pencil and a, yeah.
Things of a sweatshirt or, it looks like a stretch sweatshirt string in a lycophony.
I'm just hearing a lot of gas stations and stuff now sell them the synthetic.
Because they're under the Iowa legal limit.
Then they get into Delta, it becomes a chemistry nightmare is what it is, Delta eight, I mean, seriously, Delta eight, Delta nine. At THC that gets you intoxicated is tetrahydrocarbon nine, so THC, it should be Delta nine. Delta eight is like a one-off, and it has some intoxicating effects, and so then they start marketing Delta eight, it's a chemistry nightmare, and the law hasn't figured out how to keep up with all that. It's a, yeah, and the kids talk about that, you know, they're on their phones, they're showing the ads pop up all the time on their phones, and, okay, and Bellevue's closer, obviously, to Illinois than like Macocata. That for THC products, like actual, you know, just recreational marijuana, because they're close enough to Illinois, they're getting those ads on their phone. And so, yeah, we talk a lot about, what does that mean, was, you know, you see that, is it okay, just because you see it all the time? That's the kind of information the kids pass on to their peers, we do, you know, all sorts of activities at the school, we're doing one. Tomorrow is conferences in Bellevue, we're doing a whole event in the evening as part of that, parents and kids, and the kids are leading it.
Okay, well, it seems like, you know, you, I mean, you have nine participants here, the way it looks, and somehow, I'd like to see what, how they pass that along to their fellow students, yeah.
I can put something together with them and get it to you, that is not a problem.
I mean, that's after they, yeah.
Because last summer, the kids would join you via Zoom to talk about the conference, and they can do that again if you want. This year, I have kids who can drive, so maybe they'll come in person, but they did not like the Zoom experience at all, that if you get some older kids, we have one seventh grader on the list. Three are tenth graders, the rest are all ninth graders, so it's a mix, and they'll be around for a while, you know, we don't tend to take seniors on these, because there's no advantage in training them and then sending them off into the world, so the goal is to bring them back.
Um, so you need action?
I don't need any action, I'm just informing you.
Okay, this is possible action, so.
It, well, it was, and then when we actually uploaded all our stuff, there was no signatures required.
Okay, well, I appreciate the information, yeah, I mean, going forward, I mean, this fall or whatever it is, after they get back in class and initiate some programs or training or education to their fellow students, it'd be nice to have some kind of report.
Sure, happy to do that.
Or get them on here, they'd be happy to participate, yeah, appreciate it.
All right, that's what I had on that, and then.
Come up and join our neural break. Morning. Good morning, so on my agenda, I have James Crocker, you don't look like James at all.
No, a little younger and fatter, but.
So Andrew is here with us, and Julie, for discussion of possible actions on an opioid settlement request, would you like to explain that?
So you've got a copy, I believe, of the request?
Yep.
Okay, that Chief Crocker filled out, he coded it F, it's actually F one would be the actual code, we can go back to the settlement document, provide evidence-based treatment and recovery support. So the request really is to set up a room at the new jail to do NAA and telehealth, so to provide treatment services to inmates at the jail, which would be something new we would do. I think it fits very neatly into F one, as we were trained in Des Moines when I went to that county's meeting.
And then, did I read in here that they were going to use the EOC?
No, the multi-purpose room, so that'd be the one next year.
I thought I read somewhere in the request or somewhere in it, that they intend to have this unit or this equipment?
They were working on similar equipment in the EOC, but this is specific to.
Okay, just so we're not overlapping with whatever Lynn has going on with the equipment to the grant that they obtained for furnishing the EOC.
Yep, so the, the EOC will never have inmates in the EOC, we'll keep the inmates.
So this is an inmate, or is this a program for? Before the problem, before you're an inmate, that's what I took it.
No, no, this is for the inmates while they're in custody.
Okay.
Section F is titled Treatment for Incarcerated Populations. It's a Schedule One approved use.
And who teaches this, or who does this?
Well, the telehealth, the big TV would be telehealth, so ASAC, Hillcrest, they would zoom in and provide that service, be remotely, that would be, and then AA, NA would be, people from those programs would come in and lead those sessions.
So the television is on a cart, that kind of thing, so that can be moved if it's not needed, it's also an interactive one, they can use it as a whiteboard if they want to use it as a whiteboard. Being on that cart eliminates, you know, when there's cases, we don't need that kind of equipment, we don't want to risk it getting broken, that kind of a thing, we're able to move that out of the way.
And it had to have security, because you're doing healthcare, it required like encryption, that's, it's an expensive TV, but it has to meet all those criteria, because you're doing remote healthcare.
And these four items that are listed on the bid sheet, now we get it, as your bid sheet? That's the total add?
Yeah, that page.
There's two different bids, as my understanding.
So two different bids, one includes.
One for the TV and the cart and all the good stuff that goes with that, the other one is for the furniture for the group room, so they can do the group sessions of NA. So it's a total of eighty-six, eighty-seven, ten. Eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents. Thank you. The red question.
I'm sorry, you're not.
Eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Is all the criteria, you mean, tracking wise?
So what I've started to do, and Julie was one of my emails that I sent out yesterday, is that in looking at the future of having to report how these opioid dollars are spent. I sent an email to Julie, I sent one to Julie too, I'm sorry, to Jim Crocker, and I sent another one to Ray on TV, to have them basically fill out the form of what we have to submit to, you know? You know, how we have used our opioid funds, this report, unfortunately, it's not signed, so we need to get it signed.
Didn't no one come in yesterday, I think?
Oh, I didn't see that, okay, I didn't see that.
Because I replied back, it's like, I didn't see the signatures of Luann sent that.
So anyway, I requested out of Jim and anybody else to fill out that form, because there's some benchmarks according to that report, so.
So, tell me what, I mean, either Andrew or Chief is here, or Sheriff is here also, just for the public's knowledge, Sheriff Kilburg is here also. So what kind of program, or what do we do now for inmates that may need special services like that, or?
So we have no ability to securely do like AA or NA now.
Sure, just because of facility for one reason and not the equipment for another, yeah.
Uh, so typically now, if we're looking at doing some sort of a treatment, we'll either have people come in or we'll go to ASAC.
Okay, so I guess my next question would be, we got the equipment. Now, when we have these programs implemented or ASAC comes in, is there a fee for them?
Um, I would have to check with, like, the crisis region, I'm not sure if some of that's funded through them or not, I'm not quite sure.
Well, always who pays for this treatment, I mean, always I think the inmates should pay for the treatment, I don't mean.
Well, if they don't have insurance, ASAC has a block grant for that.
I'm just asking, who pays for the, if there's training professionals come in, do they charge for their services?
Well, they'd be counselors, not trainers.
Okay, if the counselors come in and provide these services, do they charge for their services?
I guess, so what I'm used to is, we work through the crisis region, they make the referrals, the people come in or do whatever they need to do, I've never seen a bill for any of that.
Good.
So I guess that's the best.
I mean, it's a legit question, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I guess Andrew could better answer it to me probably, but I'm not aware that there's a fee for that service for helping those inmates.
Yeah, and I don't know, if it's substance abuse, or it's mental health, or it's, you know, the new program that's coming out, you know, what would it fall under?
ASO's or whatever.
Yeah.
One thing I can tell you is, there's a trend coming across the country where jails are going to be mandated to provide training and stuff like that to help someone who comes in, because if you think about it, when they come into the jail, they finally get sober and clean. And that's the target time that they want to hit those people, to give them the training and the education on how to avoid that when they get out, give them the tools, I guess, maybe that can help them, prevent them from getting back into that. So other states have already started to mandate this, and it's coming our way, it's coming across the country, so don't know what that'll entail by the time it gets to us, but, you know, that's the goal, is to prevent these people from coming back. There's even, now I've seen where these tablets that they use to communicate, that they have to put money in their, they have to have money in their commissary to communicate with the outside world, to talk to family and stuff on their tablet while they're in jail, kind of replaces the phones.
Sure.
That they pay for, there's even companies that are starting to implement that they have to do so many education minutes or hours, so that they can earn their time to use that.
On the tablet, yeah.
Yeah, so, which makes sense.
It does, yeah, I mean, technology, that's great if you don't.
Getting back to the request, and we're talking about, so that multi-purpose room, we're talking about in the actual jail portion, this is not going to be in the administrative side.
Right, right.
So if you're not going to have it in there, because it's not required, you got other places to store it, or?
There, yeah, so there, there's a closet right there off the multi-purpose room, and then likewise, the laundry room is right off to the side too, so if we need to move it, we have places we can store it.
Reading this, there are benches to report on.
Yeah, I'm looking at the.
How many meetings, they, you know, that we posted, I mean, this would be very reportable, that you, there's obvious benchmarks that could be, I would assume the sheriff's office would somewhere keep a log, AA held on this date, and a tell, just, you know, a number.
Couple of different places we lock it.
Yeah, and so it's, it, it's reportable, it's not just a general.
And on schedule A of approved use, seventy-five percent of our dollars have to go there, item MSA is setting up treatment space for new jails for treatment programs, I mean, it, I motion it through.
Motion and second to approve opioid, opioid settlement request as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Again, you know, it's just like the program we talked about with the students, that, you know, and Brett says that it's been implemented in other areas or in the process, or whatever it may be, I'd like a follow-up of the success rate somehow, if, if that's possible sometime, but.
Well, even, you know.
I mean, we won't know that until we get running a couple of years, you know, but if it's been implemented somewhere else.
And, you know, we've talked about, you know, the medication-assisted treatment, that kind of thing, this will open up that ability a lot more to get into those kinds of things too, without having to go outside of the jail and security risk, that kind of a thing, so.
You know, Julie, what, what, what the opioid funds may do in the future as far as revenue to, towards things like this? I mean, I know it's ongoing, correct?
It is, it's a long-term settlement, each one's a little different, how many years, but I don't even, we're going to get money every year for, I think, twelve is the minimum years on one of them.
There's a schedule.
There's a schedule, and so there is some long-term, these are one-time funds, which is why they gave, some of the grants gave, or the companies give you multiple years upfront to do some of these kind of projects to get you started, so you add some saved money. So this should be a one-time expense versus some of the other ones might be reoccurring, but it's a long-term, I mean, it's funding goes for prevention, twelve years is like, oh my God, long, that never happens, so it's a nice opportunity to do some good work.
Yeah, we certainly, if we can make a difference, we certainly want to do that, you know, I mean, obviously, they need help.
Yeah, just to give you a little more background of what I spoke about just a few minutes ago, so. Yeah, just to give you a little more background of what I spoke about just a few minutes ago, so I think that sheriff was from Pennsylvania, so not east. And so when they had people, so an inmate came into the jail, they were on a treatment program when they came into the jail. And I know you guys are talking about that, hopefully the legislator, they're working on uh, medical costs for the inmates, because I one hundred degree that percent agree that it'd be nice if the counties didn't have to pay for that. But somebody came in on a call to patch for lack of a better knowledge of what it actually was. But they were trying to treat themselves to get off whatever narcotic they were on. When they got into the jail, uh, that wasn't a service or a medication, if you will, provided to that person. Um, and that jail, and I believe maybe the entire state got sued for not providing that, uh, to keep that person on that program of continuing their success of getting themselves off of the addiction. So that's where this is heading, you know.
Yep.
And and if we think about it, I mean, that's our goal too for the community is to. I mean, the more we can eliminate that stuff, the more people will have jobs, they'll be productive members of society, they're paying taxes, they're raising a family, they're doing everything that we want everybody to do is be a productive member of society, you know, so. So that would kind of make sense.
Wish you appreciate it.
Thank you.
People working at it.
Thank you.
Do you have the one to be signed or the quote, or how do we need to do that?
I have one, um, the original signatures if they wanted.
Okay, or I wasn't there like the. I didn't sign anything, mine has hold on it, so.
Well, mine has a staple in it, I don't know if that's legal news, but that's got two, the original signatures for Chief Crocker and myself are on that.
Thank you much.
Thank you. So in terms of the quote, does Mike need to sign the quote or no, okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, um, Lori, Lori Rolling, our Jackson County, uh, zoning administrator. And Laura Carstens is with present to review. What are we reviewing, is there comprehensive on the date?
Yeah, this is a schedule update that um, was predetermined when we signed the contract with E C I A that they would report at progress.
Uh huh.
You guys have a timely band, so I see you guys have it printed, we also have it on the screen, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Alright.
Well, good morning.
You have the floor, good morning.
Laura Carstens, I'm with East Central Intergovernmental Association, E C I A, I'm senior planner there. Um, and had the pleasure of working for a long time. Nine months, nine months. Uh, as as Laura said, this is an update, we're uh, um, I'm going to talk about, oh. We're going to talk about somebody's password. Oh, we can't do that. Okay, you all have it in front of you now?
Yeah.
So we'll, okay, so I'm going to go on to slide two and get your stats. So I just wanted to to give you a quick overview of what we're going to do the update on, and of course, you're free to ask questions too, so we're going to talk about where we're at with the chapters for the plan. The outcomes for public participation, in particular, community survey. We're also going to talk about the draft vision statement and the draft broad goals and priorities that the steering committees come up with. And then take a look at our next steps. Just wanted to do a quick reminder for our our audience, just what is a comprehensive plan? Oh, it's a document that's really a policy document, it's not like a zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance. So it provides policy and guidance for the long term, includes a vision, which we're working on. It's comprehensive because it covers all sorts of things, from the environment to the economy, to the lives of people throughout the county, it's a long term, about twenty years typically. And of course, we try to get as much public participation as we can to shape that. The other thing that ties it in to why, why would you want one is, it's the basis for your zoning ordinance under I O code, so great to have direction for that ordinance. Can you go to the next slide? These are the chapters that we have worked on for the plan, they are all um, in a state where they have gone to the staff, they've been looked at by the zoning commission. With the exception of chapter fourteen, that's the implementation chapter, they'll, the commission will look at that. This month, we're also going to give that chapter to the steering committee next week, so they'll take a look at it before the zoning commission. And that chapter has an implementation strategy for each of the chapters. Go to the next one. In terms of public participation, I want to give a shout out to Lori and Ruth in the zoning office. Uh, they have been really, really committed to going out and reaching out to people where they're at. Something that would be difficult for E C I A staff to do, uh, they have made over a thousand uh, direct contacts and untold indirect contacts, there are things like newspaper, radio, uh, email and that sort of thing. So that community outreach um, has been supported by E C I with a Facebook page and a website for the project. We also, of course, have public meetings with the zoning commission and the steering committee meetings have also been public. A big part of our outreach, of course, has been that community survey that we reviewed and approved back in July of last year. We didn't do a public workshop, and then we are planning to do another type of open house, public outreach event of some sort this spring, again, trying to take things to where people are. Trying to tie in with something that's already occurring, where people are gathered. For the formal adoption, that would public hearings, so more about that in a couple of months. So if we can go on to the community survey, great, so we had, um, four hundred and forty three surveys come in between July and January, and so we've um, got a good six months data that we analyzed. Is, we continue to get them in, it's pretty easy for us to update that data, but I'll just review with you, um, the results. They've actually been fairly consistent um, over the course of this six month period. People generally are more positive about the quality of life, a little less so about things like um, how they view the present or where they view the future. Terms of housing, uh, three quarters believe our housing here in Jackson County is good or average. We get into specific categories, as you see on the chart, little lower for renters, young professionals, persons with disabilities. In terms of. You're, you're going with me, perfect, thank you. Um, in terms of conditions within the county, pretty high satisfaction with county offices. Uh, with most of the conditions in the county, and also with the services and utilities that are available. So we're getting pretty high marks for most things in the county. Uh, we also ask people, what, what makes Jackson County stand out versus anywhere else? And so these are the top five things, its location, the recreational opportunities. The rural agricultural character, it's a safe place to live, and it has locally owned and operated shops and restaurants. On the flip side, we looked at where were people dis strongly or strongly disagreeing or at least disagreeing with some of those? And so based on those percentages, we, we've identified what we're calling concerns. So un, uh, the employment opportunities, housing, the condition of properties. Healthy, affordable food, and a welcoming community, you can see the percentage there, they're all less than half sometimes. A quarter, but we still want to bring those to your attention, to the commission and steering committee's attention. Then, the next thing we asked folks was in terms of future growth and development, what would you see, and so the top five priorities are identified there. Improving quality of life, promoting economic development, retaining and expanding local businesses and jobs. Providing for a healthy, active living for everyone, and preserving and protecting viable land for agriculture. The next slide is just a snapshot, if you will, of who responded. So based on the demographics that were collected, most of the respondents were white, female. They did not own a business in the county, and they did not have children under the age of eighteen at home. About forty three percent work here, about thirty percent are retired. About sixty two percent live in a city and thirty seven in a rural area, which is pretty close to to the census split. We did get response from all thirteen cities and then, as well as the counties, rural areas, and most of those respondents own a home. We did get a good range over the annual income levels, most of those were between uh, twenty five thousand, a hundred twenty five thousand, and we're really close to what the census data is predicting we have. In terms of education levels, we um, were a little below the census numbers, but the census numbers ask people where they're at at age twenty five or, or more so, we're, uh, numbers are a little bit different, but um, most of uh, mostly I think we're pretty close to that census data. In terms of age, um, only age of nineteen, we did pretty well, we could have used a few more people between nineteen and twenty five. Um, we didn't get a lot of people under eighteen, but then there's a lot of people under eighteen who would never do their survey, they're in kindergarten, they're uh, fourth grade, they're not really an audience, so kind of looked at once you're out of high school. Um, so we'd still love to get more people in that younger age group, particularly uh, families with kids. And so we, that survey's still out there, people can still send in responses. Now let's talk about where we're at in the steering committee now, this is a, this is the committee that you've appointed, um, we have been delighted to work with them.
They're amazing.
They are.
You guys, it's the cream of the crop.
Yeah, I call them the brain trust.
They were.
They are, they've been very enthusiastic, their role was to help us identify strengths and challenges, issues and opportunities, come up with a vision statement and identify broad goals and future priorities. And they've done it, I'm going to go over those with you, and I will tell you that the zoning commission has reviewed and uh, accepted them as well, so that's coming with their recommendation as well. So the first thing that we discussed with them was to identify strengths for the community. And so this list you see here are those that they felt were the most important. And we, this was also, um, kind of, this was bolstered by the survey results and input from the open house. For the next one. Same thing with the challenges, these were what they considered the most important. And these also tie with those survey results in terms of economic uh, childcare and housing issues. They go on to the issues, they tend to be a flip of the challenges. Um, and again, these were what came out as the most important. And then the next, uh, next slide is the most important opportunities, and they really focused in on two things. One was retain, expand, recruit businesses, and be sure to preserve our historic and natural resources. So based on that, we then worked with them to come up with a draft vision statement. And so this is what the steering committee came up with and what the zoning commission uh, reviewed and approved. Jackson County is an engaging community, enthusiastically creating opportunity, supporting growth and enhancing quality of life for all who live, work, and visit. So we'll be telling that with the community and of course, uh, testing it right now with you, so any reactions to that? Happy to take those. The next step was then to identify broad goals and priorities, if that vision is our destination. What are the things that need to be in place to make that happen? And they identified eight things, so we got the first four up here now. So it's our quality of life, safe community, uh, recreational opportunities. Business retention, expansion, recruitment, having that available workforce with all types of labor available. Go to the next slide. Locally owned and operated businesses involved in their communities, quality, affordable housing options for everyone. Care available throughout the county, and then strong volunteerism. So those are the, those are the eight broad goals and priorities they've identified, so. I hope you can see this, probably easier on your, your printout. So this is our, our proposed next steps, where we're using a, pretty much the same timeframes that we did when we first talked to you last July, and I filled in some things that gives you a sense of where we're headed, so basically, the bottom half of the chart, in terms of public engagement, you can see we're stretching ourselves out into a few months, um, you see the websites there till December twenty twenty four, our contract is to maintain that for six months. So anticipating adoption in June, go through the end of the year. Some of the other things that are, as I mentioned, the steering committee and the zoning commissioner meeting uh, this month. That'll be, that should be the last meeting for the steering committee. Um, we, we planned on three with them, um, they're going to help us. As I mentioned, they're going to help us look at that implementation chapter before it goes to the zoning commission. And so those are really the next steps, again, to try to get another, another round of public engagement. And then move through that more formal process of the public hearings. So the process is that the zoning commission would hold a hearing and provide you a recommendation. And then it would be your opportunity to hold your own public hearings and, um, it's not like an ordinance with three readings, but certainly you can, you can have it over multiple meetings, if that's your, uh, at your comfort level. And then final adoption. So that's where we're headed, we're, we're still thinking we're going to, we're going to end in June, like we planned, and um, we, we feel like this has been a really good process. Um, Jackson County has a lot of plans in place, you've got a lot of plans. And so we feel like we are pulling in those plans, pulling in public input, pulling in um, great input from the steering committee, and everyone's really gelling. You have to answer any questions or Lori has anything to add?
Well, I would just say, we really appreciate all the work that you've done, and I would like to pa, have you pass on along to your steering committee and everyone else. Because, again, we went into this blind, um, we went through the community and maybe suggested some people for the steering committee, you know, from all parts of the county, so hopefully we have that covered. I don't know if I have a final list of the steering committee even, but uh, we surely appreciate the time, you know, like I said before. Um, this, this pays really well.
They're, you guys chose well, very well.
I mean, I mean, again, you know, when they come and spend their time to do this, it, uh, is rewarding as you're paid, you know. The reward that you get out of it, so.
Yeah.
We appreciate it very much, uh, what you've done and put it together, I've, you know, I've seen the, how many pages is it?
Oh, when we're done, I don't know, three hundred?
Yeah, I read part of it, I went through some of it, it's a lot, very detailed, um, interesting. You got time to do it, it's very interesting, yeah, I sat down to read it, but.
And it wouldn't be what it is without the help of B C I A.
No, I mean, I appreciate that, you've been through this before and you've done this, so we appreciate what you're doing for us and I hope when it's out. And, uh, I, I'm thinking when we're all said and done, it was money well spent, so.
Well, we sure, we sure feel like we're, um, bringing something that's representative of what your, your community, your county.
Well, and when it's all said and done, if people have the opportunity to read that and to say, well, hey, I could get involved in here, or I could get involved there. It's going to make a difference, you know, and one of the strong points you were hitting on was volunteerism, well. I get it, if we don't have that in Jackson County, we don't have any E M S service, we don't have a fire department, unless you have volunteers. So, I mean, we went through this at the forum last week, we're also, you know, we're trying to get hold of this legislator that these E M S and these fire departments, they can't make a living selling pancakes, you know, so I'm sorry. You know, you got, you've got, you're carrying, law enforcement is carrying a ninety five hundred dollar radio on his chest, who buys them? You know, these are volunteers using them, so, yeah, I appreciate, much appreciate it.
Well, it's been a pleasure and look forward to bringing you that final.
Yeah.
Version in June. If you want um me to be at any other meeting between them, then I'm happy to do that. It's it's five minute drive.
A minute walk.
Ten minute walk. So thank you so much for your support.
Appreciate it.
And we will pass along your kind remarks.
Yeah, oh, yeah, again, I think I. Go on, well, speak for everyone here that we appreciate what's been done.
That's what we wanna hear.
See where we can go with it.
Yep, thanks you too.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
You too.
The sun out looks dark in here.
And you're looking sort of here.
Shades work.
How much rain you get, Lori?
I don't know. I didn't ask Terry. He was gone before I got out of bed, but I'm sure he knows. I'll text you the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Welcome.
All right. What? Did I miss something?
No, I'm trying to have Shelley come over.
Oh, I am down to uh Lisa. Are you?
I'm prepared.
Yeah, okay.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four board proceedings as written. And also the February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four work session written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes for the February twenty-seventh. And the February twenty-ninth meetings as written and published as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to accept, place on file the county reporters' report of fees collected for the month of February twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. So move.
Very good.
Motion second to place on file the county report of fees collected for the month of February twenty-four. In the amount of thirty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Well, we're getting down to the final part of this fun. Ride that we've been on called preparing for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. I know that we've been working on it for several months. It's uh it's required a lot of hours. But today I need a motion to approve setting the public hearing date. Of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at four thirty P M for the proposed property tax levy here. Now, with that being said, um just a little bit of a of an overview of what's gonna happen. Next week, we will be at ISAC. When we're driving home next Friday night, March fifteenth. Um. That will be our day. That's our target day after four P M. That we will be downloading the file. Um, and Shelley's here, so I'm just starting to talk about the process. Um. So next Friday night after four o'clock, we're gonna download the file and we're going to start this process of sending out these notices. To all taxpayers in Jackson County. This is a statewide request. This isn't a Jackson County request. This is across the state. This is part of this House file that was passed. And the legislature, uh they believe that everybody needs to be notified of all of these public hearing dates. I will tell you that myself personally, the the um the notice, it looks really confusing. We have nothing to do with that. We didn't program it. We have nothing to do with it. We just need to put the figures into it. I anticipate that we will get a lot of phone calls of what's this about? Um. We've been on Zoom calls. We've Shelley and I were on Zoom last week. I I think. I think it's just really confusing, but anyway. Part of put this mailing out this this mailer next starting next Friday, and then we're gonna work over the weekend because we have to approve the file and upload it. We have some work to do next weekend. So um March fifteenth to March twentieth is the window. It's five days to turn this all around across the state of Iowa. And we're gonna do our best to get everything sent to the printers. We are outsourcing this. We are not gonna do this in-house. I don't think we can stuff envelopes fast enough. So we're going to, unfortunately, we're gonna write the check, get this done to meet the requirement because we cannot be late. Um. So that's why I need this motion today to set the the first public hearing date of March twenty-eighth, and that will be on the mailer.
Twenty-eight?
March twenty-eighth at four thirty P M. We also have a six. Yeah, I fixed that, but yes.
Okay, so it is twenty.
It's the twenty eighth. Yes, I was wrong. Oh, I didn't. Yeah, it is the twenty. I confirmed that with Luanne. Um. So you know, that's what we're doing today is.
And I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but you said this public hearing is just to send the mailer?
No.
No?
This public hearing. We have to, I have to get the date set for the public hearing so I can put that date on the mail.
I agree. We have to set that date. We are still diligent, working on the budget, by the way, so.
All this is doing is setting your your maximum levy dollars that you're going to be asking for. You can go below it. You can reduce it, but you can't go above whatever you publish. This allows public input.
Yes.
So this is very similar. First, yeah, we have two public hearings, so everybody needs to understand we have two public hearings. So we have this first public hearing to talk about what's the levy going to be, and then we also will have another public hearing towards the end of April. And that's, again, that will have to be passed to pass the budget. It's very similar to what we used to do for the max levy hearing. Yeah, I don't know why they just didn't keep calling it the max levy hearing.
That changed it.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same. They gotta change it. It's not broken, but go.
Keep it clear.
Fix it. It's just all what we have to do.
All right, so that's what's in front of us right here.
Yes, so that that's just to make sure to correct that. It is March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, four thirty P M. That is right before the Five Year World Program, which is at six o'clock. We cannot have this meeting during a regularly scheduled board meeting. It is very clear in this law that it has to be. A standalone on its own separate meeting. Yes.
And that will be here?
It will be here.
Motion to set the public hearing for March twenty-eight, four thirty.
I'll second that.
Motion second, motion second to approve setting the public hearing date of March twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four. At four thirty P M for the proposed property tax levy hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. That's all that I have today.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Um, Luanne?
Well, that's at the levy rate. Is that where advertising?
It does, and then again, we can it can be changed.
You can lower it.
Lower it. I mean, it's no different than the public hearing we had for the compensation or the conference board. Same, same.
That's right.
Format.
So you can, so you've got this set right now. So you've got it set, and now you can do this, but you can't do this.
So the levy rate, I'm assuming you're gonna use is that first one that come up.
We have not decided that yet.
Correct. We need we need your direction. We've got many, as you can see, we've got many different scenarios, so that needs to be discussed and set.
Wouldn't you say that?
Soon.
I'm looking for a little more definition.
Probably for the. Are you meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, no.
Budget work session we've been having every Thursday.
Then it's on the schedule. That's your plan. Are you staying in Des Moines?
I am. I plan to. But not that I can't zoom in. Well, yeah, what time is it? Anyway, I'm gonna work session today yet?
We're having it today, then, yeah, we can do it.
Okay, let's talk later.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Luanne, our executive assistant.
All right, we will start with calendar. Um. Tomorrow on Wednesday, March sixth at nine A M, I'll be at RT A V D in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. At one thirty will be an Early Childhood Iowa Contract Review Site Visit in Davenport for Ninn. At four thirty will be a Wednesdays Are Possible meeting at Innovate One Twenty for any of you that want to go. And at five forty-five is the Jackson County Economic Alliance Partner Appreciation. Also at Innovate One Twenty, and that's for all of you that want to attend that. Um, six o'clock that night is the E nine one one service board meeting for Mike and Ninn.
Are you available for that? Hmm, are you available for that nine one one meeting? My as my.
I'm gonna be at the J C A thing. Five forty-five.
Thursday, March seventh at nine A M, I have on the schedule a budget work session for all of you. And at ten A M is a tag meeting by Zoom for Don. Friday, March eighth at ten A M is a Seventh Judicial District of Corrections. Um, meeting in Davenport for Ninn. On Monday, March eleventh at seven thirty A M is an Early Childhood Iowa Executive Committee Meeting by Zoom for Ninn. And at one thirty is another of the Early Childhood Iowa Contract Site Visits. Um, also in Davenport for Ninn. Tuesday, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March twelfth at nine A M. Um, that evening at five P M is a McCoqueta River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee Meeting in Monticello for Don. Followed by um their regular board meeting, also in Monticello for Don.
Well, that's the annual full board meeting.
The annual full word, okay. And I will be out of the office that week. Um, towards the end of that week, I think Mike and dinner going to be in Des Moines for Isaac anyway. All right. I have appointments to do today. Um, the first I'm looking for is a motion to appoint the members of the twenty twenty-four eminent domain commission. And you have the final list before you. Um, from the twenty twenty-three list, there were three people who um declined to be reappointed. And um we replaced two of them. On the eminent domain commission. So that list twenty-five first that I gave you includes those two new people.
Remove him.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the appointments to the eminent domain commission as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, motion carried.
Right, I'm also looking for.
Do you want to expand on that at all as far as who we appointed? And who put their name in?
Um, we had two applications. Um, one of the applications came from Jerry Curtin.
Hmm.
Um, from Lamont, and he um came in as a city property owner. And the other um new person on this commission is Dana Olson out of Preston. And she came in as a real estate broker or salesperson for that category.
Again, we appreciate their. Um. Commitment to volunteering, basically, and to spend time for the eminent domain commission. Um, two very good prospects again for the commission.
Okay, and thanks to Chad, Deputy Chad Raider for finding them for me because it goes around and finds them.
You know, you uh you spend time on the phone or virtually visiting, uh it takes time and uh appreciate that very much, yes.
Okay, the next thing I'm looking for um is a motion to reappoint. Um. Trust trustees to the benefited fire districts. There's one for each district, so I'm looking to reappoint um for the Miles Benefited Fire District. Um, Greg Matheson. These are um three-year appointments. And we have one every year for every benefited fire district. For the Andrew Benefited Fire District, I'm looking to reappoint Craig Summers. And for the Sabio Benefited Fire District, looking to reappoint Terry McCully.
Remove.
Second.
Motion and second to appoint um Greg Matheson to the Miles Benefited Fire District. Uh Greg Summers to the Andrew Benefited Fire District. And Terry McCully to the Sabio Fire District as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same side, motion carried.
My next appointment is to the Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority Board. Um, this is a two-year appointment, and it actually expired um the end of August last year, but it does run for two years. Uh Kathy Seifert has been taking care of that for us. Uh, we do have a place for two representatives on that if we want to, but Kathy has been on there. Um, by herself since she was first appointed in two thousand eighteen, so she has agreed to be reappointed.
Remove.
This is a resolution. This is where this this appointment is done by resolution.
They they require such a resolution.
So this is resolution ten eleven and eighteen, dash zero three dash zero five dash twenty twenty-four.
Remove.
Okay.
A motion to and a second to approve Kathy Seifert through the Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority. With the resolution number ten eighteen dash zero three dash zero five dash twenty twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same side, motion carried.
Um, also looking for a motion to reappoint two uh people to the Pioneer Cemetery Commission. Their new terms will expire on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And that is Elaine Edwards and Don Wentworth.
Um, well.
Very good.
Motion second to appoint Elaine Edwards and Don Wentworth to the Pioneer Cemetery Cemetery Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Okay, we're doing good. Um. Any other boards or commission reports that anybody would like to. Bring forward at this time? Uh. So is there any further business before the board? We have a work session afterwards again for. Uh budget work session and or, yeah, is that what is that what we're listed as?
Yes, yeah.
Any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Okay.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.